Are we ready Sandy?
Yes, we are.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Mo Handle, Select Board Chair. This is an open meeting of the Needham Select Board for November 24, 2020 and is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and this is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will not include public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present. When I call your name, please answer here, yes, or I. Ms. Cooley.
I.
Mr. Borelli.
Here.
Mr. Bullion.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
I.
And the Chair is present. Anything shared or stated at this meeting will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. As a first order of business, I would ask for a motion that this meeting will be continued to the board's next scheduled meeting on Tuesday, December 8, in the event that a technical problem develops that prevents us from remaining as an open public meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Burley, seconds. Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the, I would move the appointments on the consent agenda, please.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Cooley?
I.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
I.
And the Chair votes yes. That's unanimous. They are adopted. The first item on our agenda is a presentation on the school master plan and I would invite Dan Goodican Superintendent of Schools, Steve Popper, Director of Design and Construction, Hank Half, Senior Project Manager, Don Walter from Doran Whittier, Michelle Rogers from Doran Whittier and Jason Boone from Doran Whittier to join us in the meeting room and feel free to take the floor, Mr. Goodican. Then welcome.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I interject one quick question?
Of course.
Would Mr. Chandler be joining this conversation? You have to.
Is he present?
Yes.
Oh, he's more than welcome to join this presentation. Mr. Chandler chairs the Permanent Public Building Committee and that committee carries a heavy burden in these projects. So please, please proceed. Who was speaking for the group? Dan, do you want to introduce the?
Let me, let me start out, please, and thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. This evening, and I heard someone in Town Hall say earlier today, this looks more like a school committee agenda than it does a Select Board agenda and I, I think you've got a lot of school-related business to attend to. And, and the first really order of business is we're, we're asking that the Select Board here, two presentations this evening about the school master plan, facilities plan, and also the Emory Grover renovation. All told, what you'll be hearing about tonight is a plan, if implemented, that is just around a $280 million construction and renovation plan for the schools in the town of Needham. You know that as part of the town's capital improvement process, we have been talking about all of these projects actually for, for many years and we now finally have some numbers and some ideas and timelines to put to, to these numbers. The, the renovation of Emory Grover, the consideration of the Mitchell School and Pollard have been long-term goals of the school committee and now we, we finally have, as I said, we have actually some, some idea about what renovation needs are for these three of our school buildings. We also recognize this is the first of many conversations. This is not the conversation. It's one of many conversations moving the, the ball down the field, if you will, to achieving these goals that the school committee has set out. Clearly, there's going to need to be a lot of input, a lot of planning, a lot of conversation, a lot of give and take as, as we move forward. I will tell you that I happen to think that the options the school committee has voted for the community can sit to consider are efficient. I think they're cost-effective, even though we're talking about dollars that are extraordinary and more than the community has ever appropriated for, for school, school building projects. So maybe with that as a background, first up will be our designers from Doran Whittier. Talked to you about our school master plan presentation to provide you a brief overview and then our designers from BHNA talk about Emory Grover. And then we'll do both presentations, I think, if that's okay, and then do questions or whatever would make sense to the Chair and members of the Select Board.
I think doing both together would make sense, Mr. Goodican, because then it's much more efficient that way.
That's perfectly fine. I think I'll turn it over to maybe Steve Popper and Hank, just to kick it off.
Well, I'll introduce Don Walter. The team at Doran Whittier have been working for the last year, have diligently followed through multiple options, starting from and working all the way through with a working group that included many members from the, the school department as well as principals for the respective school. As Dan indicated, this has been on the table for a long time. Mitchell, as you know, was being considered concurrently with the Hillside redevelopment and MSBA suggested that we choose one or the other. This plan, although it's expensive, provides the most affordable, or I should say the least expensive option forward. And Don, I don't know if you can share your screen, otherwise I can share my screen if that's helpful.
And Mr. Chair, as the screens are being shared, is it permissible for school committee Chair Andrea Longo-Carter and Angelotti to also be included in this conversation in the event they may have something, a comment or question?
Of course, Dr. Goodican.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you can see my screen.
Yep, we can. Want me to start? Terrific. So I'm, I'm Don Walter, Principal with, with Doran Whittier Architects and with are Michelle Rogers and Jason Boone, who are both senior associates in the firm. Michelle is our project manager on, on this particular study and Jay is our educational facilities planner. As mentioned, we started this just about a year ago, really looking at all of the elementary and middle school needs. Quickly, we focused in on Mitchell, Pollard and High Rock as having the needs. High Rock, not so much about needs, but about space and how it will play a role in the High Rock, I'm sorry, Mitchell and Pollard solutions. So just in terms of the process, we did some educational planning, working with the principals and actually touring the buildings. We reviewed the enrollment capacities and projections and capacities of the buildings. We had a look at the buildings with our team of architects and engineers to determine what some of the capital needs might be aside from the educational needs. And with that, we've developed reports indicating what those needs are, develop costs for the capital improvement plans and we've developed a plan that just actually deals with some of the physical needs of the buildings, while at the same time developing solutions for, to address any educational needs or capacity needs. And then with that, we did test fits or conceptual options on the sites. So you get a chance to see how some of these solutions may work, of which there are many. We developed estimates for those solutions, a timeline or a number of timelines to figure out the most cost-effective school, children appropriate solutions for these options. We presented to the school committee in the PBBC. You'll learn tonight's school committee has voted on a direction they'd like to go in and then process just finalizing the, the report. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to take you through some of the, the facility needs. Jason?
So good evening. The, the chart that you see in front of you is a quick way of looking at all of the buildings. So we actually did a very thorough development with each of our consultants. We looked at site accessibility, the exterior elements of the building, interior elements, handicap accessibility, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, fire protection, and the column to the far right is the functional use of space, which talks about the number of students in classrooms and whether or not there's enough space to provide the different programs for each of, each grade level. And so I think at a quick glance here, you can see exactly where the buildings line up. You can see that Mitchell happens to be the most needy of all of the facilities. And then you can also see in the column to the far right that there are two buildings there, just counting the former Hillside School, which is the bottom one. There are two schools there that have functional use spaces. That would be the Mitchell School and the High Rock School, meaning that there's not enough space to provide all the programs or space for all the children within those two facilities. And then you can see that Pollard's not too far behind with a, a yellow indicating that it's in fair condition. So when we did this assessment, those three schools rose to the top. Hillside, I mean, High Rock surprised us a little bit because you can see that it's in very good condition all the rest of the way through. And so to have a school that's not meeting the needs of those sixth, grade six students made us consider that as part of some of the options that we reviewed as our timeline. We took a little bit closer look at the cost of repairing some of these deficiencies within each of these facilities. And again, we, we divided them into each category. So you can actually take a look at this and you can see what it would cost to replace or repair the mechanical systems in each of those two buildings or the electrical systems or the plumbing system in the case of Mitchell School. And then we added those up. So Pollard School, because it's larger, it costs more. It would cost about $40 million to do all of the renovations, even though it looks like it's in better condition than the Mitchell School. Mitchell School would cost about $25 million to do those kinds of repairs that are, were identified in our facilities assessment. And so then the next question is, what do you get for $40 million or $25 million? And so you would get accessibility repairs. You would get some structural repairs. You'd get repairs to your building envelopes, windows, HVAC systems, electrical plumbing. In the case of Mitchell, you would get a fire protection system, a sprinkler system installed throughout the entire building. Or in the case of Pollard, there's a partial fire protection system there and so it would be protecting the rest of the building. And in Pollard, you'd also get replacement of the modular buildings with modulators. What you don't get is seismic upgrades, additions, renovation, additions to the buildings to address that overcrowding. So if you remember the functional use of space column, Mitchell was showing in red. So there is no addition to the building for $25 million. You do not get, and you do not get replacement of the Mitchell modular. So you would still have programs that are happening outside of the physical building. Students in kindergarten would still not be part of the core building program and students would still have to leave the core building for art and music. But with that, we, we developed some possible solutions. And I'll let Jason walk you through what those were.
So Hank, Hank mentioned our working group. One of the first things we did was we went through a brainstorming exercise that we called a what-if workshop where we speculated about what, you know, groups of options as master plans might be. And so ultimately what was formed were these seven master plan scenarios, each focused around essentially what's a different grade configuration and different strategy to address these issues that were, that were identified. So starting on the left-hand column, each column represents a different scenario and each row represents one of the schools that's been studied. The green squares represent major projects that were necessary to make the, the master plan scenario work. So starting in the left-hand column with the status quo scenario, this is where the grade configuration remains the same. And the issues that Michelle just identified at Mitchell, High Rock and Pollard are essentially all addressed in the location where they occur. So something to replace Mitchell on the Mitchell site, a five-section elementary school, an addition at High Rock to address the overcrowding issues there and a renovation and or new addition at the Pollard School to address the, the deficiencies identified in that building. As we move to the right, each scenario changes, you know, essentially one thing to create a new exploration. So in the second column, rather than the grade configuration remaining the same, the second column speculates about taking sixth grade out of the High Rock facility and putting them under the same roof as the seventh and eighth graders over at the Pollard facility. So one less project, still have the same Mitchell project of five-section elementary school on that site. But instead of placing an addition at High Rock, there's additional work to the project at Pollard so that it can receive all of the eighth grade students in the district also. One of the key features of this scenario that's different from some of the others is that because High Rock is being vacated, that building would be available to be repurposed for some purpose to be defined in the future. Realizing that this second master plan scenario really leaves a vacant building with no educational purposes and reasonably good shape, the next scenario explores the same grade configuration where sixth grade is under the same roof as seventh and eighth grade. But instead of leaving High Rock vacant, it speculates about repurposing that as a three-section elementary school, a sixth elementary school in the district. The impact of that for the master plan, while the, the, the project at Pollard is similar to the previous scenario, it means that the project at the Mitchell site can be downsized to a three-section school rather than a five-section school. One of the realizations was that if we put all of the sixth through eighth graders on the Pollard site, there may be concerns that that's too many students on that piece of property. So the next scenario imagines two sixth through eight middle schools where sixth through eighth grade are both under one roof, but they occur at the Newman site and at the Pollard site. So we explored that possibility. And even if we repurpose High Rock as an elementary school, the resulting Mitchell project, because now we're losing Newman as an elementary school in this scenario, would be much larger, a seven-section elementary school, which ultimately we proved was, was not really feasible on that site. Moving one step over, we explored the idea of changing the grade configuration even further. Instead of K through fives and a six through eight grade configuration, this scenario was a K through four grade configuration at the elementary schools and a fifth through eight at the middle school level. And so this is very similar to the discontinued High Rock scenario, except that instead of having K through five at Mitchell and six through eight at Pollard, it has K through four at Mitchell, which downsizes that project slightly and adds fifth grade to the Pollard site. This was another one of those options that was not explored too terribly far because of the number of students that result on the Pollard site. So the second to last scenario we looked at, tried to address that observation by again exploring two, five through eight middle schools in a similar fashion to the two, six through eight middle schools that I discussed just a moment ago. So there would be a project at Newman with half of the fifth through eighth graders and another project at Pollard with the other half of fifth through eighth graders. If High Rock is again repurposed as an elementary school, then that helps downsize the Mitchell project again to a three-section elementary school. The final what-if that was explored with the working group was the idea of a single construction project that might address all of the issues that were identified in a single project, the idea of a super school where both a brand-new K through five elementary school and all of the sixth through eighth graders were located on the Pollard property. In that scenario, both the Mitchell site as an elementary school and the High Rock site as an elementary school would not be necessary. But like many of the other scenarios that were explored, it was determined that this puts far too many students on the Pollard site to be feasible. So rather than go through all the details of all seven of those, we wanted to just focus on the three that sort of made the short list, the status quo scenario, the discontinued High Rock scenario and the High Rock as a sixth elementary school scenario. So what you see on the screen here are the basic statistics for each one of these. In a seventh through eight, you have roughly 950 students at High Rock. You have somewhere between 430 and 477 students and at Mitchell, you have a five-section elementary school for roughly 650 students. And then as we move across, right, the discontinued High Rock scenario, there are more students at Pollard, just like I mentioned, no students at High Rock and the same five section per grade school at Mitchell. And then finally, in the third High Rock as a sixth elementary school, you still have the same number of students at Pollard, but you downsize the number of students at High Rock because the district would be taking advantage of High Rock as an elementary school and therefore the Mitchell project is only three sections per grade or roughly 330 students. And so once we identified what these scenarios were, we went through and did some preliminary feasibility study tests of each one of these interventions on their respective sites. So in the status quo option, we're addressing issues in the place where they occur. What you're seeing on the screen is in orange for the High Rock site, the most likely location for a 10 plus or minus classroom addition. On the bottom image, what you're seeing is a two-story, five-section Mitchell school. And one of the things that we discovered in this exploration is that while geometrically this size school could fit next to the existing school, there are construction logistical challenges and the district didn't feel it was appropriate to try to build this size school next to an occupied school with the site constraints that exist. So part of this option includes temporary swing space for the Mitchell students on the Defazio site while this construction project is going on. Over, over at Pollard, what you're seeing in orange is a two-plus story addition on the south side of the building so that sixth graders can be moved from the High Rock site over to the Pollard property. And what you're seeing in the bottom image is a three-section, two-story Mitchell school. And what's evident from this is while it still couldn't be built next to the existing school while students are occupying that facility, because High Rock is likely to be vacated, High Rock could serve as swing space for this project and the result is you have far more site room once the project is completed on the Mitchell property than you did with a five-section school. Did you skip over one, Michelle?
I did, but hang on one second. I don't know if it's going back. We skipped this one, sorry.
So this is just a combination of the two that I actually already discussed. We're on top. You see what the feasibility of an addition and additional parking and site circulation for the Pollard project associated with six through eight and again a five-section Mitchell school on the Mitchells site. In this case, the key difference between this option and the previous option where we needed temporary swing space at Defazio is that even with a five-section school, you could leverage High Rock as swing space for the Mitchell project because the assumption is the Pollard project would go first.
Sorry about that, Jason. So then moving into the cost estimate. So what we, what we did was we took all of those options that Jason just walked you through and we sent them out to our cost estimator. And what you see here is in today's dollars, so as you move through the, the plan, we'll, we'll discuss escalation, which was reflected in those time scenarios at four and a half percent per year. And it does not include any MSBA participation. If you were to either the Pollard or the Mitchell School out for MSBA in an SOI for MSBA participation and be invited in, this does not reflect what the actual project cost would be. We took these numbers and we I'm going in the wrong direction, I'm sorry. We began to lay them out in some options. We have the status quo option here, which looks at the Mitchell School being an MSBA project and going first. And what you see here at the top line would be the amount of investment you would have to make in those capital improvements that we talked about earlier in the presentation in order to sustain the school until the students move out of the school and into their temporary facility, which you see down here as a temporary project where the students would move off-site so that you could bring, build that five-section school project. That temporary facility was estimated at $41 million with the escalation piece of that. You would have the Mitchell School and that project at the end of it would be $112 million. You would do your renovations in addition to your High Rock School. That was the piece that Jason showed you on the end of the High Rock School. And then after all of that, you would go and do your Pollard project as a second MSBA project. And in that interim time, you would be investing about $2 million per year to keep the High Rock School operating and functioning with the capital improvement needs that it has. We looked at accelerating that project timeline, which you see in the blue here. So that's, that's what that is. And time is money. So anytime that we can accelerate the schedule, we can save some money. In the second scenario, we looked at High Rock as the elementary school and Pollard going first on the list as an MSBA project. And one thing to understand is that when you do work with the MSBA, the, the schedule is very concise and so it takes a little bit longer. There's about a two-year process that extends your schedule because you have to go into the SOI period and then be accepted into that process and then you have the issue where you have, that's when you start hiring your OPM and your architect. That process, there's about a two-year process and that's why it takes longer and costs more. You'll see that addition here in these timelines. So if, if High Rock, I mean, I'm sorry, if Pollard is your first project, you then have to sustain Mitchell for that number of years, approximately seven years before you move the students out of the High Rock School and into the new Pollard addition. And over that course of time, we estimated it would cost you about five and a half million dollars to keep Mitchell up and running. Our third scenario looked at High Rock as the elementary, Pollard as the first, but with an accelerated schedule. Again, we're talking about time is money. So backing up this, doing Pollard School faster gets the students out of the High Rock School faster, which allows you to move students from the Mitchell School into that building quicker. And so by accelerating that project, you are actually saving quite a bit of money keeping the Mitchell School up and running until you can move those students out. And then we moved into the D scenario, which I think you've become familiar with recently. So under the D scenario, you would begin your Pollard project, but at the same time you would put into the MSBA, an SOI for your Mitchell School project. And so if you were to run those two schools at the same time, on the same track, you're condensing the schedule and saving quite a bit of money over the long run. You're also saving the time that the students have to be living in the Mitchell School, reducing that time, moving them out of that school, reducing the investment that you have to keep that school up and operating. And then finally, you're also reducing the amount of time for the master plan. And then finally, you're also reducing the amount of time for the master plan to actually occupying the Mitchell School in September of 2020. We've also presented a modified approach to implementing option D. I'm not sure, Hank, did you want to walk through this, or do you want me to?
Yes, I, I can discuss this because it wasn't clear if the town wished to or would need to delay the implementation of the option D, for whatever reason. And so we asked the designers to consider how we might take a first step. And this modified approach, in terms of implementing option D, does just that. It takes a short first step toward the long-term goal. It would enable, and, and it would focus pretty much solely on the Pollard feasibility, and then potential capital improvements to the Pollard that would be consistent with the long-term goals. What we want to make sure is that we are, if we are investing money in the school, that it meets the long-term goals that Doran Whittier has identified as part of the option D. And so this modified approach, which I believe you'll be discussing as an alternate in terms of the CIP, would be a much lower first step, but an important first step in achieving those long-term goals. So I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Michelle.
Well, I think that's all that we have. Part of our presentation.
Thank you, Michelle, for that. I think as this chair suggests, that we will move right into the EG plan and then take questions. It's a lot, it's a lot to digest, I know. But if we go to the EG plan, then perhaps some questions from, from everyone would be helpful.
And Sandy, can you let Joel Bargman into this discussion, please?
Evening.
And I'll, I'll give you a brief introduction. Joel Bargman, Bargman Hendry and archetype. BH plus A is also a familiar face to many of you in town. BH plus A helped the town design the senior center, the CAF, as well as the Rosemary Pool project. Joel has been working also for about the last year on the Emory Grover Building, going through numerous options, and he'll present those to you this evening. Joel, do you need me to share my screen, or do you want to share your screen?
I think that, um, I believe I'm allowed to share. Are you seeing that now?
Yes. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Joel Bargman, as Hank mentioned. A year ago, we began the challenge to explore various ways to provide the school administration with updated, modern facilities that would meet their departmental needs for now and well into the future. In doing this study, I, I just want to acknowledge the contribution of the working group and the Permanent Public Building Committee that worked with us on the study. Their input was invaluable. Tonight's presentation will begin with a brief background of the complete feasibility study that we prepared on behalf of the school administration, including a review of the Emory Grover historical significance. I'll review some of the initial studies, show you some test fits, site studies, preliminary concepts, and best-use alternatives. And, and we'll say that we'll, we'll bring it down to three options, and, and each one of them meets the administration's program needs while presenting different opportunities to address the parking challenges. But they do have the baseline of solving the programmatic needs of the school administration as projected for years to come. We've, part of this process developed some high-level cost comparisons that I'll show you that are backed up by very detailed cost estimates that were prepared by an independent cost analysis firm. The Emory Grover Building began with a donation of land by William Mosley. The building was designed by Whitman and Hood, and it was constructed originally by FG Colburn. It's 120 years old, as I mentioned. It served as a town's high school until 1923. It's been for many years, the school administration building. I believe they started there in 1947. In 1987, in recognition of the historical value of the building to the town, the building was named, was listed for the National Register of Historic Places. Emory Grover represents what we believe is the only example of Renaissance revival architecture in the town of Needham. And it served as a sort of gateway project coming into the town center and culminating in the now restored Town Hall Building at the end of Highland Avenue. Quite interesting juxtaposition of buildings. Value of Emory Grover, as I mentioned, is recognized as an integral part of the community and was recognized by the citizens in accepting the National Register nomination in 1987. Unfortunately, as you have with many 120-year-old buildings, Emory Grover has seen a decline over the decades. And part of that was, there's always a sense of there being a new project to renovate the building. You can go through the records back to the 19, late 1940s and see there's been initiatives to renovate, and those initiatives to renovate have often gotten in the way of doing some of the deferred maintenance as people have tried to be frugal with their expenses. The original slate roof is leaking. You can see there's buckets collecting in water goes through the roof and drains into the building. The existing building systems, including life safety systems, are either non-functioning, outdated, or in the case of sprinklers, missing. The window, original windows are non-functional. The portal on the right side of the building is in need of restoration. It's being propped up with a metal arch at the moment. And as I said, the deferred maintenance has taken its toll, and not out of neglect, but just out of the fact that the projects were always thought to be happening, that haven't materialized. On the left, you'll see the stairs. They've been sagging, so there's been a tie rod and temporary support for the two main fire stairs in the building. The ventilation is in poor condition. Performed programmatic test fits with the existing Emory Grover Building, looking at ways to accommodate the school department into the building. The requirements of the building program for the school administration greatly exceeded the area of the existing building, so we had to really consider an addition. Alternatively, to the Emory Grover site, we looked at five town-owned sites to study those for potential new construction as, as a viable alternative to renovating this building. All were determined to be inadequate, as identified in our report, except for the Hillside Elementary School site, which was of sufficient size and capability to house a, a building of the size required for the school administration. In addition to the studies, what we wanted to do is if program was moved off-site from the Emory Grover Building, we wanted to understand what was the best use of the Emory Grover Building for the town. And so several best-use studies, including what value those would have to the town, were undertaken for the Emory Grover site. Those are sort of independent of the school administration program. Bear with me here, there's, I just want to explain the options. Our preliminary examination of the Emory Grover site and its size limitations expanded our exploration into six options. Three finalists at Emory Grover and three finalists off-site. I mentioned that the off-site locations, five of those were discarded. In this phase of the project, one new came into play. It was a Stephen Palmer site that wasn't originally looked at, and that's how we ended up with three alternative new sites to compare against the Stephen, I mean, the Emory Grover site. Option one proposed tearing down the existing building and putting up a new building. Option two looked at preserving the front. It's a facade scheme. You preserve the facade and build a new addition up to that facade. So everything behind the brick front of Emory Grover is an entirely new building. Option three proposed to restore the existing Emory Grover Building and build an addition on the back. And then option four and five are two different looks at the Stephen Palmer site option, either using the Stephen Palmer site or looking at the Greensfield site. Both of those were ultimately eliminated, as was the Hillside Elementary School, where we would propose tearing down the elementary school building and then building a new building possibly larger than required for the school administration, or allowing for an addition onto the school administration building in the future, should the town need additional office space. The final options all occurred at Emory Grover. As I mentioned, the, the Stephen Palmer was discarded because the Stephen Palmer building lease goes through 2027, and that's just too long for the existing building to be reused by the school administration. Putting a new building up on the Greensfield, as we've seen on other studies in the community, really wasn't a viable option to consider. And the option of locating at Hillside was discarded because of various environmental issues that are on that site, plus it's sort of remote location when you compare it to Emory Grover. So we were left with these three finalists. As I mentioned, one was tear-down and build a new building on that site. Option two was the renovation in addition onto the building. The facade scenario where you just maintain the front facade was deemed too expensive and non-workable. And then option three is a, a new one where we create a more elaborate addition on the backside of the building that vastly improves the usability of the Emory Grover Building and the addition. This slide is really a summary of the parking requirements because with, you know, many projects, the parking has become, becoming the major criteria. We know that we have 48 full-time equivalents at the school administration along with IT staff. We have transitional visitor parking, folks coming during the day, parents coming during the day, vendors coming during the day, et cetera. The total's 18, so we have a total parking need on-site for a daily, on a daily basis of 66 spaces. There are times when there may be a school committee meeting in the conference center where that daily need exceeds, and we would have to accommodate those spaces with surface parking in the neighborhood. Summary of the parking options is option one has 86 spaces. Option two has 72 spaces. Option three has 66 spaces. And option three, which is a variation with the more elaborate addition, has 74 spaces. So the point is each one of the options has sufficient parking. I'll quickly go through the alternatives. The new construction scheme that's shown in the site plan shows how a new building is moved closer to the Hillside Avenue, and it provides more onsite parking at the rear of the site. Zoning bylaw amendments required to exceed the maximum floor area ratio that this building requires on the particular site. Addition of several zoning waivers that would be required in order for this option to move forward. And because of that, we took this option to an informal meeting with the planning board and achieved sort of a consensus that it would be a workable scheme that the FAR may be an issue, but it could be addressed by this project. There was a desire on the planning board expressed that might be nice to retain the existing building if it could be at all accommodated. The planning board liked the fact that there was no parking in the front of this building on Highland Avenue, and, and the parking was all concealed in the back by the existing building. Um, quick view, view. It's a lower-level basement level that lines up with the existing basement level of Emory Grover, and then three floors above grade that, and I won't take you through the the details of that program, but it does accommodate the full program, including the localized IT and the conference center. Option two, you can see, keeps the existing Emory Grover building and constructs an addition on the back. The problem with this addition on the back is that, um, by makes a large square footprint between the existing building and the new construction, which has a relatively large amount of space inboard that doesn't have natural light to it. So that is one of the drawbacks, another drawback that's sort of common to the renovation schemes. The planning board wasn't excited about these parking spaces in front of the building. He looked out in the historic photograph in the beginning how beautiful it looks when there's no parking in, in front of the Emory Grover building. Again, this solves and satisfies the full program requirements of the project on floors of the new addition that match up with floors of the existing building. This does require some variances and waivers to the plant zoning requirements for the site. This is what's called the rotated addition. So I, I showed you in the last scheme, the issue was slapped on the back of Emory Grover and ended up without very much natural light by rotating the addition so it pushes back to rear property line. Addition has ample natural light and window opportunities. And we even have opportunities to bring windows into Emory Grover on the back. Very few windows there now, but there's no reason that we can't add more windows in the future. This particular scheme matches up with the same floor levels of Emory Grover. But what we really would prefer doing is basing the main level of the addition up so that the main level of the addition comes through contiguous with the first floor of Emory Grover. It gets the new addition out of the basement level of the building, much better light conditions, and it would provide 16 spaces underneath the first floor level of the addition would be accessed off of the rear property line off the back. And then you have 16 spaces before surface spaces, and then additional spaces at the Stephen Palmer site. The beauty of this addition is you come in at grade, and then there's a elevator and a bridge connection that connects with buildings, so we have a fully accessible Emory Grover, it's completely contiguous with all floor levels, sorry, of the new addition. Turn this back over to Hank, have to walk you through the schedule, and then I'll conclude with a discussion of the costs. Hank?
Thank you, Joel. As shown in this outlined schedule, there'd be two
As shown in this outlined schedule, there'd be two phases for funding. The first would be in May of 2021, where design funds would be appropriated for the project that would give a full year for the design team to go through the schematic design development and construction documents with bidding, so that when we return to get construction funding in May of 2022, the project could proceed. But proceeding would mean, first of all, that Hillside School, which would function as temporary space, would need to be adjusted to allow for the move-in of the school administration in the early 2023. Then that while they are occupying that temporary space over Hillside for two years during construction, the redevelopment and rehabilitation of the Emory Grover building along with its addition could proceed without having the site being occupied. This would lead to a completion of the building, the new building in April-May timeframe of 2025, and a move-in over the summer of 2025. Joel, back to you.
Thank you. So I think you can probably tell where we were going with our presentation. Option three, with that addition rotated so that both the existing building and the new addition get adequate natural light and natural ventilation for the, the building occupants. Is the preferred scenario. Why was that also preferred for other reasons? Well, Emory Grover is one of the oldest remaining buildings in the town of Needham. It's the oldest public building remaining as far as we know. The building's been identified as the gateway into town center by the Historical Commission and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Desire to renovate the exterior of Emory Grover as it contributes to the town center while still providing modern office space for the next several decades for the school administration is in a healthy and safe environment, represents, I believe, a valid path forward. That was a concurrence of the working group, the PBC, and the school committee. With the inclusion of the parking garage, the parking deficiency is further reduced by sixteen car spaces, should that option be chosen. We were asked to look at alternatives by the Finance Committee, and they encouraged us to look at a short-term and a long-term rental. If we looked at a long-term rental, we reached out to Jones Lang LaSalle as a suburban broker familiar with the Needham Wellesley Newton corridor here, and they provide us with some data of what we should project out looking at a twenty-year base starting in the year 2021. So we, thirty thousand square feet, new office space, at one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year rent over twenty years represents a twenty-seven million dollar expense. In addition, there would be some tenant improvement costs while landlords provide tenant improvements. There'd be special needs for internet backbone, the, the community conference center space, special needs for school administration. Any particular tenant going into Office Park generally has additional tenant improvement costs, which were estimated to be three million dollars for that space. Then when you add soft costs, the total twenty-year expenditure is approximately thirty-two point five million, which is in excess, although in the same order of magnitude as the renovated schemes, but it's about five to six million dollars more total in the other schemes offered, which are shown here. Option one is the demolish and construct a new building on that site, twenty-six point one-five million. Option two is the Emory Grover renovation in addition option at twenty-five point nine rounded off. And then the preferred option is actually the most expensive because there's more facade. There's the garage opportunity and just more surface area building is in at twenty-seven million. So even the most expensive option is still three and a half, is still five and a half million less than the leasing space option. I will mention that the leasing of space option, you would have an asset, the Emory Grover building, to dispose of and to either private developer or some other use, so there is some value to the building. In its best case, that was estimated to be about one point three million dollars. That would garner some modest tax basis for the town as well. But in most scenarios, the reuse of the building was to be so expensive that the one point three million value is attained when the building's torn down and provides a new site for a new apartment building on this particular site. One way to offset costs is to consider the use of CPA funding and the Town of Needham Community Preservation Plan, unless Emory Grover is a historic structure that's eligible for CPA funding. The planning board and the school committee both indicated their preference towards saving Emory Grover through restoration of the original building's exterior renovation of interiors, in addition to the east or rear to provide a modern facility that serves the needs of the department. So we went through and analyzed its use of community preservation funds. Many of the building's major issues are due to major decades of deferred maintenance. These would all be overcome with a renovation and make it eligible for CPA funding, which we've summarized here, it preserves and protects historic properties, demonstrates a public benefit to preserve historic proper resources, and incorporates remodeling, reconstruction, renovation, and the making of extraordinary repairs. So it passes on all three categories. The maximum funding that could be available would be hard costs and top costs. Want to be careful, this isn't anything that the CPA committee has proposed would be eligible, but this just says of the funds that would be spent on the Emory Grover renovation, a total of twelve and six-three would ultimately be eligible for CPA funding, and that amount would be determined by the committee. So in closing, option three maintains the historic building as a gateway to the town center and the town hall site. The envelope improvements, restore back a code compliant facility for great use by the school administration. We are able to accommodate the code upgrades, and we're able to accommodate addition, minimizes the impact the addition on the historic building. So only one little corner of the building is added on to, and more than three quarters of the existing building remain extent. And thank you for the time to present this. I'll send this back to the Hank and the, any, thank you.
Thank you, Joel, and with great thanks to Joel and their colleagues at Doren Woody. Mr. Chair, thank you for indulging us, there's a lot of information in a kind of stuffed into the last fifty minutes or so, I appreciate your, your indulgence. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Goodkins, I have just one clarifying question before we delve into this. What, 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 what would the cost be for school administration on a clean site in comparison to the cost of doing it an Emory Grover renovation? So if we had available to us a clean site that was adequately sized, that didn't have significant demolition costs, what would the cost differential be?
Designers actually looked at that, at the Greensfield, on the Great, Great Plain side of things. I do not have the specific figure in front of me. Hank? Going to phone a friend, because I think Hank could probably have.
Well, I can. I, I think it's fair to say that a new building would be equivalent to the cost of this building, which was the new building on Emory Grover, less demolition costs for the existing building. So if you could find a site that had no demolition costs, would be somewhere in the order of twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars, depending on the site work. The site's slopes in the front, but once you get up to the site, it's flat. So another new site may have more topography. It's, it's, there's never a perfect site, so I think it's fair to say that cost would be in the order of twenty-five to twenty-six million.
So same order of magnitude?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up for questions, but there are two members of the school committee here. You want to say anything, Andrea, or? Is it just Andrea?
Connie is here as well.
Oh, Connie, I don't see you on the screen.
On the screen, she may be.
Do you have anything you want to add to this before we go into questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't really have anything to add, I would just say that I want to reiterate what Dan said at the beginning, that this is, these are, the totality of these projects, it's a, it's a large sum of money over quite a bit of time. But we do believe that particularly as it relates to the master plan, that the option presented will best meet the school's needs in a cost-effective manner for the town. It's just what can be afforded and when, and we understand that this is the first of many, many conversations as we move forward in determining the best path forward, both for the schools, but also keeping in mind the other projects that are on the town's docket. So I look forward to hearing your questions and areas that you want to know more about.
Thank you. Would anybody like to open up with some questions? If you can use the hand tool, I, I see you, John, and I'll call on you, but after this, if you could use the hand tool, I do see the participants and I can see the raised hands there. So John Bullion.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody that's here, making part of the presentation and developing the plan. You know, the, clearly, one of the first things that jumped out on the master plan is the dollar amount. Thank you, Andrea, for speaking to that this is with part of many conversations. I think I'd like to go right to, and I will have another question afterwards, like, right to go to Dave Davison, who is here. And I know he's not prepared, I'm putting you on the spot, Dave, but I think what I'd say is, you know, where are we roughly with respect to our ten percent debt capacity at this time? We, and how much is left of the Williams School to bond? And clearly, we haven't bonded any of the public safety buildings. And we just talked about Emory Grover, I'm assuming Emory Grover is a more, higher priority project than what we're being presented with, with the master plan. So, and then I have a couple of questions that I can, after maybe have some, have Dave speak to this a little, and I'll have some questions about the Emory Grover and your question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Dave?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bullion's correct, we will be providing the boards with a financing summary update. You should anticipate that later in the winter, at the time that we start formulating the annual town meeting warrant, and we have a better sense of what projects are being considered, I will be able to update and have estimates for the board. Relative to the specifics, the Williams School is almost completely finished from a financing standpoint. We are awaiting a final audit by the MSBA in order to determine what their final share of the project costs are, and whatever portion of the outstanding notes that is not covered by the MSBA will be bonded later on in fiscal twenty-one. As fate would have it, fiscal twenty-one is actually the peak year for debt service based upon all the projects that have been approved to date, which also includes the three public safety facilities in the Williams School. The FY twenty-two budget submission for debt is in, and it's actually going down slightly from what is budgeted this year for debt service. It was known several years ago that these projects would push the town over its desire to keep the total debt service at, not at ten percent per year. It currently is for fiscal twenty-one, eleven point four percent. Based upon all the projects that have been approved to date and still yet to be bonded, we should be back below the ten percent as, as early as fiscal twenty-five.
Thank you, Dave. John, you had other questions?
Yeah, let's, if I could, could I go to Emory Grover? And now Hank, I, this, this will probably be questions for you. On option one, it was, it was presented as, as a thirty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two square foot building, which, which meets the total program needs, including IT of the school department. And that was on a complete rebuild at the Emory Grover site. Getting back to the discussion of, at, you know, say Greensfield or another flat parcel. I, I guess the concern that I have, or the question that I have is a twenty-six million roughly. We're talking total per square foot cost of roughly eight hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And it seems as though the other options, option two with thirty-two, nine oh seven, and option three at thirty-four, seven thirty-seven, are in essence about, they're a little bit less per square foot. And yet I look at the complexities of dealing with a renovation as we have all been through. I, I was, I was hoping, hoping upon hope that a flat parcel rebuild would yield us a better price than twenty-six million.
Yes. The, it, it really depends on the location within town. The efficiency of those three options that Joel went through balance the difference between renovating a historic building and their costs associated with that, and having that envelope and some of the structure which is pre-existing. So there are both benefits and expenses associated. In the teardown scenario, there are, and also the reuse of that site, there are various cleanup costs and demolition costs. So you're correct. And, and then the other assumption in the unit price of a new build on that site was that it would not be a, it would be a significant public building, that it would have a prominence appropriate for that location within the town. As you well know from the work that was done many years ago at the PSAP building, there was a much, you know, I'll say a lower specification requirement for that building. Now, depending on the location that you're talking about, wherever the green field might be, it, it would likely be. We, we could certainly go through and look at other alternatives as to envelope construction and the need for
If there's only limited demolition, those costs would come out of the equation. Where in the construction of a new building, say of a. Senior center quality. You might be in the five to five fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars per square foot range, but on top of that, you then have. Your soft costs and any other site costs. So we really would need to have the designer look at the specific site to understand what that, that. That mix would be.
John, before you go on, we have two other members of the board who want to ask questions. Do you need to follow up directly or do you want to wait till they?
One, one last question that I'm done, which is to Hank again. For the year and a half, for the eighteen months to twenty four months that Emory Grover would be under construction. If, if we were to go down one of those, one of those options. What is, I, I missed what the estimated cost to fit up, I think it was Hillside to move school administration there. How much is that estimated?
We, we were carrying about one point five million.
Okay.
If, if we didn't have to temporarily relocate, that would be a savings as well to the total project cost.
Okay.
Thank you. May I interject? Yeah, just very quickly, it is a one point five million dollar cost if we did everything that was suggested. I'm not convinced we have to do everything that's suggested, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you, John. Matt Borelli has his hand up and then after Matt, Dan Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of information here to go through, so I'm just gonna kind of piggyback off what Mr. Bullion was saying and then I can talk later about the master plan. I saw it the same way as far as swing space would be a savings if there were, again, talking about if there were an empty parcel. The off-site parking, I think we would eliminate that issue, which I think although we're trying to squeeze as much parking in this space and have maybe. Limited off-site spaces, if we do the underground garage, I think that's still an issue. The architectural design, I think what Hank was referring to is I think on that prominent corner, you are going to spend more money to have it look like it should. We used to call it the piece that the skinny rabbit or something, you know, we kind of put the basic necessities down there, except for the exterior, but we made it very utilitarian. That might be an option. And then the demo costs of that building, you know, with that brick and weight and, you know, you're looking at single family homes, you know, at, you know. Fifty thousand a demo and we just got something on Ridge Hill, which obviously is a lot more money when you get into an extensive building. So I think the demo cost would be, you know, hundreds of thousands of, of savings, but that might be looking too far ahead. It's just one of my comments. Staying on that, I just would like the commercial space, the per square foot rental cost, especially with COVID seems very high. And I know you spoke with a broker on that. I would just want to get a second look at that forty five dollars a square foot. Seems very high. And as far as reselling that parcel for one point three million, I know something just sold in the downtown for two million. That's half that size of that parcel. So I would want to look at those numbers a little more carefully as we proceed with that building. And I will yield and then I can talk more about the master plan, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mr. Matthews and then Ms. Cooley.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can, I think I'll, I'll start with. The Emory Grover because it's a little smaller and then move to the other. The, I really appreciate getting all this information. It's good for you to come in. It's good to have a thorough presentation. The options aren't, aren't easy, but it's good to have this as a starting point, particularly where there are going to be a lot of. Stakeholders, both within the town government and the citizens that want to weigh in on this. And the key issue to me for Emory Grover is simply. Does the public value this as an historic and iconic structure? To the extent of being willing to invest the premium cost of, of keeping it. The key to me is if they do, then we need to keep it. We need to fix it. We need, and we need to put it to public use. Because almost any other path results in it being demolished, if not immediately, then in the not too different distant future. I had a couple of questions kind of following on that. One is. Just a, a, almost. Bored question for Mr. Bargman. If we were to do the renovation that you're proposing, does the third floor of the current building, the. Get, does that get back into use as a result of the renovation?
Yes, I mean, pull that up. The third floor is used in the center portion of the existing building where the attic is, where you have the tall.
Yes.
Cupola, and that's, that's the portion that's reused.
Okay, thank you. The second is, we're talking about these scenarios. In which they're under various hypotheticals, the adminis, school administration ought to be, might be moved somewhere else. And at the same time, we're really designing this, the, the plan for this design is aimed at reconstructing and adding on to the building to make it. Function at an optimum level as a school administration building. So I'm sort of asking the question. And going back to my first point, if the town keeps it and fixes it, it's got to be put to productive use. It's consistent with what the, the, the work of the town. So if admin goes somewhere else, do we have a use for this building?
If I may answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthews, none to my knowledge has been identified. But I would defer to town manager. I don't think it could ever be used again as a school, just because of the site and the size of the building. And no other department, to my knowledge, has identified it as a preferred option for reuse.
So that's something really, yeah, and I'm, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot or think about it, but if we're gonna put twenty seven million dollars into the, into this building. And keep it for town use, and we're looking at a lot of challenges in terms of the total demands on town resources. That's, it would seem to me if we decide to do this, this preempts questions about moving admin. Somewhere else except for swing purposes. That's. The, but it brings me back. The big question is, does it, it, this is an extra cost to keep the building? Is that what, is that what the town wants? We may need to find a way to frame that for town meeting. This is certainly a very helpful recommendation to have to do that. Moving to the, 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 the capital plan, again, very helpful to have the information. Thank you for bringing it to us at this early stage. I share the concerns that I think you're probably hear everywhere you go as to how all of this fits into the capital planning process for the town, but it's good to have it. I had one question particularly relevant to the, the, the high rock with the red dot on. Functional use of, of the space. What does, what does that mean in this context?
Take that one?
Sure, thank you. It, it essentially means that the building is over capacity. That there are more students there than the classrooms will allow. What's happening educationally.
That's a sufficient answer.
Okay.
Perfect. The. I think from, when I'm looking at this, my, my, my biggest questions besides the problem of how do we fit this in our capital planning process is. Pedagogically, it seems to me to be different when, than things that I heard at other discussions of these issues earlier, which. Told me, I thought that what I was hearing was that we really considered it to be not really such a good idea to have a middle school north of thirteen hundred kids. And that the sixth grade center was a solution that we thought was a great value and, and delivered a lot for the town. I'm not on the school committee though, and the school committee is in charge of making these decisions. So I just think this needs to be, be explained in a thoughtful way as we go forward. I don't want to put a question mark on that right now, other than to say there is a question there. The other thing I just wanted to flag as this moves on is. To be sure that we're keeping an eye on how enrollments are going to fit in whatever it is that we're doing. Right now, the town really has been in this kind of twenty seven to twenty nine thousand total population with ups and downs. In school enrollment for about fifty years. But we're over thirty thousand now and we're going to stay over thirty thousand. We've added about five hundred apartment units in, in the past five years in which we see. The planning of that indicates that it's not likely to add. With all the other factors affecting enrollment, that our net enrollment is not likely to be impacted substantially by that. But those are kind of what we thought and sometimes things don't quite work out that way. So we need to understand that as well as the fact. That we, the town is particularly as we look at issues of regional housing. And what the state is, is asking and what our own public may be asking us to do. Might lead to at least discussion of approaches to zoning and housing policy that might add some num, some significant number. Of family housing units to the town in the next five to ten years. And if we're, I don't think that you can stop planning for the schools because on speculation of discussion about possible. State legislation regarding zoning or other policy changes that we might make. In, 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 in reviewing zoning locally. But on the other hand, I don't think we should be making decisions that preempt discussions that are already ongoing. So I think again, that's a, that's a, as long as we know that we're planning new schools. With space for, for, for possible enrollment changes that may happen in the, in the, in the coming five to ten years, then I think. That's helpful, but those are, those are, that's the substance of my comments and questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mary Ann Cooley and then Matt Barelli had his hand up and then at the conclusion of the board's remarks that I'd like to also have some. Some comments. Go ahead, Mary.
Several questions I had have been already raised, but I'm just thinking following on from Dan's comments. I, I, my recollection is that we are actually anticipating seeing sort of a shift in our student population over the next decade. Where it's been, where it is currently somewhat more weighted to the younger grades. We'll see that shifting up toward the high school grades. Across the next decade, and I just want to confirm that that's correct. So that's, that's part of, part of what's getting considered for this planning process. And in looking at where we will have capacity in the future or not, correct? Yes.
Yeah, yes, I, Ms. Cooley, I would say that that's correct. I mean, overall, notwithstanding the pandemic and what may be some temporary or not so temporary shifts in enrollment. We, we just, we're, we're unpacking that now, as you know. We were seeing that more going to the secondary level and certainly a renovated Pollard. And a smaller Mitchell complement that need.
All right, and, and Dan's question, I mean, at the, at the time that we made the decision to move to High Rock. As a sixth grade center. It was an unusual decision, but it was a decision that we thought worked for, well for us in that period. My understanding is that the school committee now is sort of rethinking about that as the best approach based on input from. The High Rock and Middle School principals and the parent community these days, and I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit more?
And how that.
Something, something briefly and Andrea may have something else to say. We have not reconsidered the, the sixth grade model. We think actually it's working quite well. We believe though that the reality is with enrollment shifting, that there are efficiencies to be gained by bringing the sixth grade. Likely as a separate school within a school into a building where you can share cafeterias and gymnasiums and auditoriums. High Rock does not have those facilities at all. High Rock was designed as an elementary school and in fact, when it was renovated, it was still renovated as an elementary school. The toilets are sized for elementary students. The gym is an elementary sized gym, smaller, I would argue. It's a perfect spot for an elementary school and in fact, was meant to be a temporary situation until the community decided what it would do with Pollard. Here is an opportunity to continue our six through eight program, which is what we in fact have. But create some efficiencies and also maintain the autonomy High Rock has as a bridge to the middle school for our community.
And then, you know, I, I think the, the price tag of all this, of course, is challenging and, and so understanding what that looks like. As Mr. Davison works his magic will be important and I, I know that magic can't make. The potential debt load disappear, but at least to help us understand it better. I believe all the costs that were presented are presented independent of any potential MSBA. Monies returned to us, so, so there's some, some potential delta there as we're just trying to understand that complete picture. But I do understand and support recommendations that provide for the greatest flexibility. As we move forward, because I think the, the state situation with housing, what they're trying to figure out with workforce housing and what's coming. If we are on the edge of, you know, capacity at all our schools has the potential to be highly disruptive for us. So that is part of the equation as we're trying to look going forward right now, just acknowledging that fact. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. Barelli and then Mr. Bullion will speak after him.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for all the work on the master plan. You know, my just comments are, it is a staggering amount of money. I know that when we talked, I think of the chair by chair. You know, and that first came to us, I think if it's three hundred million when you put in school administration, I know we're all. Conscious of that and we're all trying to find a way to make it work, but just taking a step back. I don't know figuring that amount of money, how we can actually make that work with the impact of the taxpayer realistically. So even though, you know, we hear a lot, oh, things are going to cost more in the future or it's going to cost more to repair. But even if we do that, even if it costs more, but we drag it out, it makes it much more palatable to people to be able to actually afford it. So even though we're saving money by doing it quicker, you know, it's not a saves if you can't afford it. So I know we all know that, just something to keep in mind as looking for solutions here. You know, I looked at the, the slide that had kind of the patchwork. It looked like with, was it sixty five million? If you put in Pollard renovations and then some Mitchell renovations, if I had that number right. And I know that solution, you know, it didn't check all the boxes. I know the modulars weren't in Mitchell. Maybe that's something that we can add on to that figure and again, make it something that we can afford. Instead of this, this large amount. I'm just trying to think of different options as we move forward. I think when you hear about turning High Rock back into either an elementary school or the addition is going to be hard for people. And I think Dr. Good against you did a nice job explaining of what that would look like or why that's necessary. But I think that's going to be a hurdle after we had that whole discussion, was it twelve years ago? And, you know, we said, okay, we're going to go in this direction and now we're, we're changing course. And I think once you make a decision like that, it's okay, well, we made a decision and we kind of have to live with it within our means. So again, another discussion we're going to have, I know this is the beginning of a conversation. I know we're on the same page as far as the, the dollar value and trying to squeeze everything we can, but those are my concerns as we move ahead to the, the next discussion of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. You know, last comment I'll make is it will be, you know, mirror what, what Matt just said, which is this is an awful lot of money. And I'm glad to hear that, that our debt position may be getting better than I thought it was. However, there's two parts of the debt equation. One is the computational aspects of it that Dave Davison does. And the other part of it is the actual amount that ends up in everybody's tax bill. And the fact remains that the public's, public safety buildings are not on our tax bills yet. We're not paying for them yet. We're not, it's not, and, and, you know, the, the general increases that we are experiencing on an annual basis are a lot. And I know that we're in a very tricky time right now. And I know that we're in a very tricky time right now. We have a pandemic. There's a lot of economic hurt out there, even in Needham. And I think looking at a three hundred million dollar plus could be more. Usually these things are. Cost price tag. And and the necessity in order to to fund anything of that magnitude does require MSBA. Participation, and we don't know where they are on this, and it may be that they look at this and say. We may not invite you in for five to ten years or more, because we we don't have money either, and we have more projects than we can handle. So. I as far as the configurations. I've been through this with the High Rock School and and, you know, making the decision to move to High Rock. Removing the population out of Pollard because the feeling at that time is that it was better to have a a school that was under a thousand students. Thinking can change, educational dynamics can change. I'm all good with that. I just want to know that. The people of the town can afford to do this, and at this point, we can't in the foreseeable future. The question is when, and I don't know when that will be, but it's not going to be in the next year or two. And we're probably talking a number of years. So this is, as Matt said, to be continued. We have a lot of discussing to do. Thank you.
And I I would echo what my colleagues have said. I think everybody is concerned about the magnitude of the plan, but I I view that plan as. If we had unlimited resources, this is what we would do with them. But as we all know, we don't have unlimited resources. Which gets me to the point that I forget if it was Matt or John who brought up with respect to. The PSAB building and the CAF. Those were buildings that were relatively modest buildings built within a budget. And I think we need to take the approach if we were to build school administration on a if we could identify. A buildable site that would house school administration. And set an affordable budget that we could live with. Within which we could build that building, we might get a very different building than we would if we were putting it in, as Mr. Bargman pointed out. A prominent place that reflects the the significance of our civic center, the downtown. So I think we have to look at these things that way as we go forward. Does anybody have any closing comments or questions? Dr. Good against.
Just I'll close with this with great thanks for this conversation, one of many to come, and the MSBA, as John points out, needs to be part of the conversation. At some point, and perhaps maybe we could talk about that. Later on, I do want to point out, though, that. Now you have these three buildings that. Every other building, I believe, except for DPW has been addressed in town. And the Emory Grover Building is not sustainable much longer. I will advocate soon. To abandon this building, and then whatever will happen to it will happen to it because we cannot stay in this building. Much longer. That's one thing and very important for the community here. I know all of you know that, but the community needs to hear that. It is no longer sustainable. Or not for much longer. It it's together literally with duct tape and spit. In regards to Mitchell and Pollard. You know, part of the reason we moved out of the sixth grade out of Pollard, besides the enrollment. Pollard has significant structural needs. The modular classrooms are beyond their useful life. They're not going to last much longer. They're very they're very similar to Emory Grover in that regard. And they house on a on a on a daily basis, almost two hundred kids. So. There are decisions that have to be made sooner rather than later. As the town finishes its school and municipal construction program. Those projects, Emory Grover, Mitchell and Pollard, they can't languish for years. So with thanks for the conversation. Appreciate your your time, and we'll keep talking.
Thank you, Dr. Good against. I think we all agree that we're dealing with very, very real needs here. So the question is whether the means we have to apply to those solutions and how do we accomplish that? There's been a lot of work put into this, and it's only the beginning, I think, of a. A trail, especially with respect to the plan, but the Emory Grover, I think, is high on everybody's list. Thank you very much. Anybody have any other comments before we close?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. John, you have a thumbs up or is that a comment?
It was a thumbs up for happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we agree on that, too. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that's gone into this and your help this evening. That brings us to the town meet town manager's portion of our agenda. And I would like to ask Kate Fitzpatrick to address those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a number of items tonight. The first one is the termination and release of easement for the Mill Creek property, which is the Modera and Needham complex. You'll recall, we've had a lot of conversation about the sewer easement at that location. When the the when the developer received the comprehensive permit, they came in and they asked. That if they relocated. The sewer line at their own expense, whether they could construct on the easement and the board allow them to construct on our easement. And now that the project is complete and to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Works. We had already gone into town meeting to authorize the select board to abandon the easement when the time was right, and the time is now right. And I think this will finish out. The comprehensive permit for the Mill Creek Modera project and would ask the board to approve and authorize me to sign that termination and release of easement.
Thank you, Kate. We were all present when those negotiations took place, so I would ask for a motion. To. Accomplish the termination. Is there a motion? John Bullion?
I would move that the board approve and authorize the town manager to sign the termination and release of easement.
Second.
And there's motion and a second. It's already discussion on the motion. Any comments anybody cares to make? Then that brings us to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. So that's unanimous. Go ahead, Kate.
The next item, Mr. Chair. Would be the discussion of the MBTA's proposed service cuts in their project that they're called forging ahead. We're still trying to make sure we research the. The exact impact on the town, but I do suggest that the board authorize. Sending a letter to the MBTA before the end of their comment period, which is about it's next week. It's a very fast period. The Transportation Committee met last week, and I know they're formulating some recommendations to the board on this matter. Basically. The fifty nine bus is impacted. It's it's not exactly clear how much of that service would be lost, but. The fifty nine bus does provide an important link to the green line for the town, so there's some sense that. If commuter rail service is going to be reduced, then eliminating or lowering. And actually not increasing the fifty nine bus might not make sense because it's my understanding that the that the green line. Service from Newton is not is not affected. Also, there's significant impact on the commuter rail in all over the state, but in Needham. All weekend service would be eliminated, so that Saturday service that we fought so hard to to keep would be eliminated. And there's midday and potential peak impacts on the number of trains that are running. And all service will end at at nine at night. Now, I we know, everybody knows that the ridership of the MBTA. Is a fraction, a small fraction of what it should be, and if you if you drive by the parking lots, which. Literally just twelve months ago. Members of the board and I were at the MBTA asking them how we could create more parking, and these parking lots are empty, and it's really devastating, and we understand that. The the concern is. When the service is gone, how it would ever come back and how you would prove that people needed it once they. Once what they wouldn't have the data to say that people needed it. The last piece, Mr. Chair, which we're we're trying to flesh out and. On the calls that I've been on with the MBTA, there wasn't clarity on this is they are proposing to eliminate the layover facility in Needham, and it's not. It has not been articulated what that might mean for service, because as you know. There's been ongoing discussions about whether there's two or three train sets in Needham overnight in the winter, and the MBTA, we have. In some winters, moved a third train set to Boston, and the MBTA's position has been that when that when that train starts in Boston. The reliability is suspect because any additional delay in South Station, getting it out here. Can impact travel, so. We I think we should express concern because we're not clear on what that might mean. For the reliability of the service, because I do believe there will be a now normal in the future when. The commuter rail stations that we have make continue to make this community incredibly. Very valuable for the people who live here, who will be going back to work. Was at an event, Mr. Chair, where. A speaker mentioned that in every pandemic that they've been studied. Cities have gotten more important and more viable and not less. So I do imagine that our city where many of our residents commute to. Will be back full strength, but it, you know, we don't know how long that will be, and the great concern is that service could be lost forever. So. Without great specificity, I do I would ask that the board. Authorize the crafting of a letter, which I can share with the chair and the vice chair. To at least put on record some of these concerns, and if you have others that you'd like included, I'd be happy to include those as well.
Yes, and the Transportation Committee will be sending a draft. Or sending a memo to Kate that is very specific with respect to their concerns, so she'll be well armed to write that letter. Is 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 there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board authorize the town manager to send a letter to the MBTA expressing concerns about the proposed. Reductions in service and potential disruptions in system reliability associated with the current proposal. And then after the motion, Mr. Chairman, and after it's been seconded, I do have a comment.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Early seconds? Go ahead, John.
You know, I I I think that all of us, I I think I would wish, you know, we we start the I would wish part of our thought processes. That last March, when the governor shut down, you know, declared the state of emergency, that the MBTA reduced service. For the many months that have transpired, and the use has been. Miniscule, and yes, I do drive by the parking lots, especially Hershey, and it's sad to see. One, maybe two, sometimes three cars there. So as far as the the when these these anticipated cuts are going to be made, my understanding is it'll be sometime. Mid-year twenty 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 one, and, you know, just when, and it's and I understand it's going to take time. To bring the economy back, bring back people on riding the MBTA. It could be a number of years, and I think we all understand that. We don't know what the new normal is going to be, and we don't know how long it's going to take to normalize whatever that new normal is. So, but I also understand that they have a fiscal dilemma. I don't I do not know how they deal with that. I support this motion. I support. Whatever the Transportation Committee's recommendations are in consultation with the town manager, and. That's all I have to say on this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Mary Ann Cooley and then Matt Borelli, and then I seems that Mr. Matthews also raised his hand, so we'll go with Mary Ann, Matt and Dan. So go ahead, Mary.
So, Mr. Chair, the the other thing I'm wondering is this comment period, as everybody has observed, is very, very tight. But I wonder. If the town manager might take advantage of our notify me system. To just encourage citizens of the town who do use the commuter rail to craft their own letter. Some of those I know have some idea when firms are thinking they might start to bring people back in offices. Some of those just know that they might. Be anticipating something mid-year next year. I do agree with Mr. Bullion saying this is probably going to shut down right around the same time that people are just needing it again. Based on what we currently know, which is definitely a frustrating situation. But but I'm in full support of the town manager sending a letter on our behalf.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that's that's a great point. Also, the layover facility, it's a thorny issue that we've dealt with. So just to be clear, I think when we're, and I know we're going to look at this letter, but when we're crafting it, I know we've had the discussions, the neighbors. Have always had an issue with that facility, as we all know. So if there is a way that that could be a change without impacting. The service, we still don't, it seems we still don't have that information. So. It's I think it's going to be a wait and see approach. Ideally, it would be great if it wasn't here for those neighbors. I don't know how realistic that is, but just something I think we have to wait and see. And then tell them that, you know, if they can have the same level of service like they're saying. Out of Needham, then then that's okay, but we'll have to. That remains to be seen. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Dan?
Yeah, I I mean, these are difficult issues. We're trying to trying to reduce costs. It's not clear. If the cuts aren't reductions aren't made, where the funds are going to come from to keep it going. On the on the other hand. Public transportation is a core. Service, and it's one that we. Buying on in all point in our current needs and in our future planning for traffic convention congestion issues for. For environmental issues for 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 as as part of this housing strategy that of a of a. Housing strategy for the region is as an equity issue over time. And it's clear from these, even thinking about what what Matt has said about. The layover facility. Yeah, there's pushing and pulling both ways about the layover facility, but. The reasons that the balance point is where it is with the third set in town most time and two sets out here most of the time. Is that gives us a balance between the, you know, the neighborhoods. You know, the peace and quiet in the neighborhood and the need of the commute of the citizens of the town to be able to get to have reliable train service. Under the current rules of engagement, as I understand them, if there are no train sets here. Our service reliability is likely to be severely decreased during difficult weather. And if you reduce that, and then you want to bring it back, I don't think the neighbors at that time will be. Enthusiastic about it. So the 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 status quo has many tough parts to it. But it's something that people understand, they can work with, and they can rely on. And I think even about. So much of people. Of the decline in usage that we have is that people are trying to socially distance. Well, if you reduce the frequency of service. Then at least logically, people fewer people reside will ride because. It's harder to be socially distant. So I'm I really would think that. The challenge and I'm it's going to be interesting to see that how the town manager crafts this this persuasive letter to the governor, because I think. But I would be thinking in terms of trying to put it in simple terms. It's really important to the public that to the extent that we can, that we maintain the existing service. To have it available as people are able to get back and rely on it going forward, because. The alternatives just add more complexity and problem to an environment in which we've already got about as much as we can handle.
Thanks, Dan. No, I have a couple of comments, but I want to give Mary Ann a chance because she had her hand up. Go ahead, Mary.
So I just had one other thought, which is I'm not sure the degree to which we. Understand, and we may not be able to sort this out. I I know that we know we have citizens who use the trains to go into the city. We also have folks who are in the city who use the trains to get out here to work. And to the degree that we have some large employers who count on those happening even now.
Right.
If there are way to quickly reach out to a few selected people and gain an understanding of that, that data might be quite helpful for us. And certainly useful for us to understand. I I don't know if that's possible.
No, but it's a good point, Mary Ann, because it that train goes both ways.
Yeah.
And in terms of.
As as does the bus.
As the I was going to get to the bus.
Yeah.
Because the bus. Is also a key part of our transportation network, and it. Serves, I suspect, a lower income quadrant of both our community. And people who come from Boston to work in this community. So it's actually a matter of social and. In fact, racial equity, if you look. At the folks in town. So I think we need to. Make sure that we include the bus and the train in anything we're talking about with respect to the T. And the service needs. And again, like the point about the employers, I think that's an excellent point. So. Any further discussion before we take the vote? Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Borelli?
Aye.
Mr. Bullion?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. So that's truly unanimous. Thank you. Um, that brings us to the next item. Kate?
Chair, the next item is a, a double item, both relating to the Minuteman School. And Ms. Cooley and Mr. Matthews were both at the Minuteman, the Needham Minuteman School Study Committee a few weeks ago, and so they may have something to add as well. With respect to this school fields project, when the plan for the school was put into place, there was always contemplated renovation of the fields. As you, you probably remember, the school was rebuilt on the site of its fields and then the, the old school taken down and then the fields need to be restored. So the athletic complex that, that was proposed was an ad alternate and was, it was, it waited until after the MSBA process was complete. So the base project is basically the synthetic turf, the batting cages, the ball fields and all those things. And then there are some other improvements, including lighting and the track. So given the pricing that the school received from the contractor and the funds that they had available, they have, they met with us before they took a vote, but they have since, the Minuteman Schools Committee since, has since voted to borrow 1.9 million dollars to complete the project, which is a total, a total project cost of more than that, but there was additional funding available for the project. The school met with a number of the town managers, both Mr. Davidson and I were at meetings where they discussed this. The, the financing situation where you can borrow for very little money to complete a project, we do highly recommend that the board endorse that project. Procedurally, under the new agreement, the, once the Minuteman School has voted, School Committee has voted to borrow money, the member towns have 60 days to object by vote of a town meeting. So the, um, the, the town would be required to call a town meeting to reject the bonding, but that, that is not something that we recommend that the board do, because we do think that, that the project is worthy. And if I could just move to the second one, Mr. Chair, the other request that the school committee has asked is that the regional schools, the regional vocational high schools did not receive any of the municipal, what we call the municipal cares money from the pass through, through the Commonwealth from the federal government. And they have had to take, you know, significant extraordinary measures as we have. And so they have asked the member communities to pay a modest amount related directly to IT infrastructure, maintenance and PPE on a proportional basis to the number of students. So that for, for, for Needham, they've requested $12,613.55. Procedurally, we would have to pay an additional assessment. And then we could file for reimbursement as long as that money was paid by December 30th and as long as the the funds were used by the Minuteman School for COVID-related expenses before December 30th. So we would need to ask Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer at its next meeting, pay the Minuteman assessment, and then we would be able to submit it for reimbursement. These, both of the Minuteman items are a little complicated, but we do believe that the school, the brand new school, which is completely full, which is a fantastic thing, as we expected would happen. They didn't have any access to the cares funds, and we thought it made sense to recommend to you both that, that the board approved the Minuteman School debt issuance, debt issuance for the fields, enter the approval request for the CARES Act funds and support a reserve fund transfer recommendation to the Finance.
And these can be done in a paired set of motions? Kate?
Yes.
Or do you need, you don't need them separate?
No.
So, um, is there a motion? Mr. Bullion?
I would move that the board vote to approve the Minuteman School debt issuance for the completion of the field component of the school building project and approval request from the Minuteman School for $12,613.55 from the town's allocated CVRF municipal fund and endorse a reserve fund transfer request to provide the funding to the Minuteman School in advance of reimbursement from the Commonwealth.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Matthews?
I'd just to say, I, I, we've had the, I, we've, it's a good report from the town manager on both of these things. I think these are good requests from the school. The first, this is consistent with their capital planning, which has had as he, you know, it bumps in the road, as we all know, but they've really been diligent and worked through. And in fact, we should note that at the meeting that we had last week with the superintendent and our working group from the town, one of the big issues around Minuteman was whether or not they were going to be able to fully enroll the school, because if they couldn't and the enrollment projections were off, that was going to increase our cost, but we felt it was valuable enough to commit to it in spite of some uncertainties. They are fully enrolled for the next incoming class and have a waiting list. So all from within district. So they've held up their part of the bargain and the numbers are coming out right, and they, they need the support on this. And the other piece is really, in many ways, it's just a kind of falling through the cracks in terms of they're not being able to get direct funding for the, their, uh, their COVID costs. And it's, it's, it's right for them to be, to ask the district towns and, and, and good of us to help them out. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Mary.
I was going to say, as the Town of Needham's Building Committee rep for Minuteman, I just wanted to share everybody that the project for the fields had been fully vetted by that building committee. And I do think the project is the right project for the school. If it were in our town, we would be doing the same project that they're doing. So it's, um, at this point, I think important to support and finish. And I am, as everybody's noted, delighted to see the school fully enrolled and actually to see increasing participation from Needham students at the school, which is what we expected to have happen.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before we come to the vote? Mr. Bullion?
Yeah, one question. Um, how has the Needham's share of the enrollment gone up?
We're, we're up this school year about three students, but the participation in the lower grades is higher, so we would expect that to continue, to continue to increase.
Good, good.
And I know a couple of kids that go there and just speak very highly of it.
Mary Ann?
They've actually tweaked their enrollment strategy, so they're starting working with classes a year earlier. And I think that will benefit them. I think, I think by working with the eighth grade students that they were, they perceived, and I think they're right, that they were often getting students who already had an idea of where they were going the next year in their head. And sort of by starting a little earlier, it gives you the opportunity to, to think differently about what your options and why might be for high school. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
Can I just ask a question about the waiting list? Does the waiting list include kids who are coming from our, our district or any other member districts?
No.
Just external?
Just external.
So they have an obligation to take our students irrespective?
First.
There are, there are districts that withdrew from the district who are on the way.
Right, but I mean, there's no cap on the number of students we can send, right? Or is there?
Well.
Capacity?
There, there is a capacity limit at some point. We have not hit that yet.
Okay. Thanks. So that brings us to the vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Now we're halfway through our meeting.
Well, I can try to speed up. They're pretty dense. So, Mr. Chair, the, um, we did send you a lot of documentation, as we always send you all of the items that have been submitted for the capital plan. But today's discussion is really just to tell you about what we're thinking about for FY22. And at the next meeting, we'll show you what we're thinking about for the five-year period. And at your final meeting in December, we would ask the board to vote to support the capital plan.
Okay.
So, um, the, the list of funding recommendations, I, I just thought I would highlight a few, and if the board has questions, most of them are things you see regularly, they're recurring, or that they've been in the plan for the last four years and they're just finally at their year. So I know that, um, those are things you've seen before. There are several that are extraordinary, and that would include, for instance, the Emory Grover, the Mitchell Pollard project, because, you know, the conversation is just kicking off as we did earlier. And so we don't have any recommendations on how and when those would be funded, but there were requests put in for this year for those items. There are a few new items under public safety. Defibrillator that is no longer working. And then the self-contained breathing apparatus for our fire department is something that we've, um, for the last three years, been filing a grant to the federal government, and we just haven't got it. So, um, they can't wait anymore, but we'll continue to pursue additional funding for those. As we discussed, there are several of the category we call extraordinary. As I think Hank mentioned in the first presentation, there's funding recommended for a Pollard School feasibility study. And what this would do is to recognize the fact that we aren't going to be doing renovations at the Pollard and certainly in FY22. And this study would help organize and set a framework for the maintenance needs of the Pollard that would be consistent with a future renovation of that building, so that we don't make repairs or improvements to something that's going to be torn out, or that we could, you know, do it in such a way that if we know where it's expected, an addition would go on, we could plan those maintenance items accordingly. And that's, that study would be done, um, with the PPBC and the building maintenance folks, um, to help plan that work. We have an item in here for Public Works Facilities Improvements, and that's a new item, and it, it does require further conversation about the master plan. But as Dr. Gudicant's noted, the Department of Public Works Garage is significantly in need of improvement. In fact, we moved all of the offices out of the second floor in 2011. We built PSAD because it was just not usable for that purpose anymore. And frankly, it's not quite usable for what we're using it for now. We did have a study to determine what the best plan was. And that study recommended a, essentially a large facility on site with some satellites. And that's how we ended up building the Jack Cogswell Building on Central Avenue, which has been a fantastic addition. But looking at the, what was then a $37 million project and faced with the other projects that you already talked about tonight, the hope would be, uh, we haven't recommended it for funding yet, but the hope would be we could find a way to fund a study that might look at a more decentralized, um, public works operation where it's not all really pushed into the 470 footprint, which is very difficult and challenging with respect to lots of issues, including environmental. So that might be a way of acknowledging that public works is all over town all the time, and maybe that, um, some of the facilities could be spread out. That's a lot of conversation on something we're not quite recommending, but you will see more of it. The, 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 the big issue in, is the Ridge Hill Building demolition, which was originally estimated at 885,000 and is now estimated at 746,000. This is an item that we are recommending. It is, um, we have invited the project team to your meeting on January, I believe it's the 12th, the first meeting in January to talk about this. It does seem on first blush, a very expensive project, but there are two buildings. There's a lot of environmental issues. There's underground storage tanks. The, the good news is that, um, they had done, um, some initial work, ground penetrating radar and test pits, and they don't believe that there's environmental implications of those underground, um, tanks, but there's always costs associated with them. So we are looking at the house and the garage, but not the barn at this point. So, um, in order to try to fund this, we did have to pull a couple of items from our fleet, which I wanted to point out, they're in tier two because we were trying to accommodate this, this demolition project and get it done. But that doesn't mean that we don't think that they were very important. So, uh, we will be recommending that anything, any way that we can increase the amount of available funding, once our free cash is certified or otherwise, uh, we would be recommending to put those fleet items back. Then there are a number of, um, community preservation items that we've included. And, um, Chair, I think that's all the ones that I wanted to highlight, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Kate. Does anybody have any questions or comments on, uh, what Kate just told us? Matt?
Just, well, I guess the, um, Emory Grover, getting back to that discussion, you're looking at the demo at Ridge Hill. I just would like to get a hard number on Emory Grover as we move forward, actually for demo costs, because I see a lot of similarities there. And just want to make sure we're talking the same conversation. But as far as the life, the, uh, public safety equipment, is there any room in the budget for FFNE that we could use contingency for those items, or would that not work? Are we, that, would that not timing?
Well, I think our, uh, we're still closing a pretty significant gap in the public safety project budget, so I don't think so.
That's right, because we have the, you're right, because you have the, okay, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else? Thank you, Kate. Uh, next item is yours also.
So, Mr. Chair, the board will be having a brief discussion, a preliminary discussion on goals, but I wanted to hi- highlight the difference between the goals and the budget priorities is that annually, the board sets priorities for how we recommend to you the allocating both the capital and the operating budgets. And so we have proposed some budget priorities for you and would suggest the approval at a future meeting. I think the, um, the changes on this version from that which the board has adopted the last several years is recognizing that maintaining our operations, both, we always are mindful of that being a high priority, is keeping what we have going. But this year, recognizing the pandemic and also financial, social and economic crises that are going on, and that has to be forefront in our mind. We need to support items that contribute to our response to COVID-19 and also in advancing our racial equity efforts that we have been pursuing. And secondly, um, the, just to remind the board that the Public Information Officer position was funded through a warrant article and not through the budget. And it, it's our recommendation to you that that be a high priority to move that position and funded positions within warrant articles into the operating budget if we deem them important. And I strongly, uh, strongly deem the position of the Public Information Officer important. It couldn't have been a better time for us to have hired one, and, um, the work has been terrific.
Thank you, Kate. And I certainly agree with you, and I, I suspect most of, all of us here agree with you and the importance of the Public Information Officer, and especially in this time of COVID and the racial equity and social equity issues grappling within the town. I think that's a key position. Mary Ann?
Kate, I think all of that is important. Um, the, the last item here about support for a funding mechanism for the mandated water quality, that's also a new one this year, right? Isn't that?
No, that was last year. It was there last year because we were presenting the board with a stormwater fee and
And we deferred it.
We deferred it. And, uh, I don't think we're likely to, we, we, we know we're not likely to recommend it to you for FY22, but we, we think it should stay there as something that's going to be a future priority.
I was going to say that, that is just the significant cost that there's stormwater everywhere. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Now we're on to the rest of your report.
Okay, very quickly. I did want to note, uh, Mr. Chair, that the Needham, Newton Chamber has put out a, a listing of the 50 most influential, um, business owners of color, business people of color. And it's a, it's a wonderful, uh, report, and there are many, um, individuals on that list who either work in Needham, own businesses in Needham, have a Needham connection with Zoom background on, Mr. Chair, you can't show it that way.
No, you can't.
I, all right, I will, I will help you out and then show you. Um, and for those of you who are more tech savvy, it's readily available online. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that, uh, might be a nice gesture for us to draft a letter to those members who are, have, uh, any connection to Needham at all. And, uh, I would, I would draft that up for you and circle those that I know, and it is probably some on the list who have a connection that I don't know of. So I think it would be wonderful. And two of our, two of our NUI members, Jay Spencer and Natasha Espada are on there, so that's just really very exciting.
That's great.
As is, um, library trustee, library trustee?
Yes.
So, um, and then, um, just on a final note, Mr. Mr. Chair, the blue tree will once again be lit the weekend of Thanksgiving that had moved, um, in the pre-COVID days to coincide with other festivals. But that blue tree will be lit, um, after, the, after Thanksgiving. And the team, and the Economic Development Team and Sandy Sinkata have been working with have been working with all, at Park Recreation, all sorts of stakeholders on, um, a campaign to light up Needham. So asking residents and businesses to put any lights out that they think, um, that they are interested in doing. It's really, uh, we're already seeing it. You can see it in the downtown. You can see it as you drive by, just to give people a lift. And if people want more information on that, it, it's available on our website and also on the Needhamlights.org website. So, um, that is my report.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it very much. Uh, this brings us to the, our board discussion. We have two items. One is committee reports, and I know that Mary Ann Cooley is going to be speaking to us on two, uh, areas of responsibility, but also a preliminary discussion of the 2021, 2022 goals.
So I could just may say maybe three things, Mr. Chair. There's, there's a temporary goal, which I think is really, as you understand, that our current, we are operating, um, our government structure during a pandemic at reduced capacity. So there's number of items related to response to the COVID-19 pandemic, um, which we're proposing. And, um, as the board has already discussed at previous meetings, creating a, a high priority goal for our race equity work.
Yes.
There are just a few other items that are new on the list for the board's consideration and we can provide more information at a later time if that makes sense. We, we would like to set a goal to work with utility companies to improve our coordination because we do have, we do continue to have circumstances where, um, we'll do work on a road and a utility will come in and, and want to, um, install something as soon as we've done it. And, um, the, I think that, uh, at the board level, this might be a, a help in order to, to achieve that coordination. You know, again, on economic development, trying to keep our businesses open and attract new businesses during a pandemic. Um, Public Works is very interested in bringing to you the option of implementing an organic recycling program for the community. So that's something that you'll be hearing from them. One of the items that, um, the board has discussed is, uh, oversight and, um, information that you might need from public safety. There's been questions about, um, maybe more formalizing reporting on metrics from, um, the Needham Police Department and be interested to hear whether that's something that you would be interested in, in including. And the board had, um, set a goal to maybe look at the composition and structure of committees under its jurisdiction and do a couple of years. That's new. And then I do think that, um, we, we should be looking in the long-term strategy at some of, at the art, the operations and the long-term, uh, plan for the RTS, looking at some significant investment there as well in the infrastructure and whether, um, the model we have is the model we want to keep so that we're investing in the right way. With that, Mr. Chair, I would leave it to the board discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to call on Mary Ann Cooley, who, I mean, this is a, this is a year of dual crises, I think. We have the, the COVID-19 crisis, which is affecting our downtown businesses. And we have a, a, a national and local issue on race equity. And Mary Ann is, has been a key player in both of those, along with Matt Borelli, who serves as co, as a, a medco member of the, uh, Nwari with Mary Ann. So, um, why don't you bring us up to date, Mary Ann?
So, uh, I, I'll actually start, uh, on the COVID front. There, the downtown economic working group has continued to meet. So continued thanks to Sandy Stincotta, particularly for being the convenier, convener of that group and more importantly, the point person, um, that I think every, every business in town calls. As we've been working through a variety of issues. Um, this past week, the group looked at, um, cr- the creation of pickup zones around the downtown. And, um, so that will be something that you should see very soon occurring. And those pickup zones will be able to be used for both restaurants or, uh, in what we're hoping will be increased takeout over the winter months, um, as it gets colder. And, um, also for various merchants in town, if somebody wants to call and order something or pick up something that is in their store, that they'll be able to park easily and quickly and get in and out to pick up something. Um, so that was done. There was also further discussion about the Chapel Street lot where we continue to look to understand, um, you know, with outdoor dining occurring in that lot, likely occurring in that lot at times in the future, does that lot have the best configuration for serving everyone well? And there's a, a few open issues with that. So there's work that's still going on in that area. Downtown merchants are actually thrilled with recent, there was a recent update to the town that I know was sent as an information item to the board. Um, they were thrilled with the news that as a result of the town's procurement of some new equipment, that we will be in fact clearing sidewalks, um, this winter in the event of a storm. That has been a huge burden for, for the merchants who are directly downtown and they are very excited at the possibility that will happen. There are some, um, restaurants downtown that plan to continue to provide table service uh, on the sidewalks in front of their stores, but they will in fact be taking those in in the event of a storm so that there's a clear path for that to come through. There are a few, uh, areas that are left in the street now. Those will be picked up sometime, you know, after Thanksgiving, early December kind of timeline. Um, and people will just be serving on the sidewalks, but not for Sweet Basil out in the street anymore, French Press, or I'm not thinking if there's any others that are in the street that are left right now. So at any rate, so that's what's happening on that front. Um, Nwari met again, um, today's Tuesday. So we met last week, um, on Monday evening. Um, and our work was devoted to the creation of a vision to guide Nwari's work. Um, I'm sure this board will recall that that is actually the first item in the Nwari charge. Um, we had a very, um, engaged discussion, um, thanks to our facilitator and, um, that discussion will lead to a second session. So we are, we are doing our best to power through the creation of that vision because it's a group that's very interested in getting to work on the issues of race equity in the town of Needham. Um, but we all agree that it's important to have the right framework to start. So that is where we're focused right now. And then we expect to be, um, bringing them sort of an agenda, uh, a forward calendar of how we can engage with some other topics to support the rest of the charge that's given, um, to Nwari and that can lead to a report for town meeting. Um, so the most important thing there is we're sort of in the middle of the making the sausage right now and I would encourage people to stay engaged. We're looking forward to coming out with something that, uh, reflects people's wishes, hopes and aspirations for, for something that the town will look like in the future and that, uh, will create an environment where all of our citizens can feel successful and welcome and belong. So.
And.
I know, Matt, Matt, do you want to add anything else? I don't know if you?
No, I, I think that's a great summary. And I think the facilitator, uh, has done a tremendous job in kind of, you know, leading the charge. It's a very complex issue and a lot of opinions and, um, we're right at the beginning, but it seems like the server that was sent out had a lot of pointed questions and it looks like we're, we're getting, you know, to be on the same page and, and the people in the group, um, they're not shy. They really like to put themselves out there and it, it's a good group of citizens who aren't that familiar with town government, but, uh, you know, are not shy to kind of stay out and, and front stay from the sideline. So we're making some headway and, uh, I agree with Mary Ann.
So our facilitator is, um, a woman named Lisa Smith McQueeney and I, um, I have to say that she really did a phenomenal job with the group. And, um, she was recommended to us by, I think Gary Bryant. Is that his name if I'm remembering?
Gary Bailey.
Jay.
Gary Bailey.
Gary, oh, so Gary Bailey. I was gonna say GB, I had that part right. Who has been working with the schools, uh, who we reached out to and he recommended, um, Lisa. And I am actually thrilled that we're working with her and I think that she is helping to guide the group. And the group, of course, has already said, well, are there some other ways that she can help us sort of focus this topic? So that, that is a topic that will come. But right now we'll get through the vision first.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Any other closing comments? Any other committees? Matt?
Just on the restaurant front for a second, um,
Yes.
Other towns and they have setups for outdoor dining that uses heaters, uh, to heat the tent. Obviously nothing inside the tent, but it's outside the tent. And I was asked by one of the restaurants in Needham, you know, is that allowed or what is allowed for heating the tent? And I was unclear. So I don't know if we can get some guidelines to the restaurants, to the group on ways that they can have heated tents. I know you have to have everything two sides up for it not to be indoors, but just trying to give them all the options for them to pick and choose as we get into the winter for those who don't eat inside. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Go ahead, Mary.
So, so if somebody chose to have a heated tent, you're right, it can't be sides down because then it counts as a structure, which would be a building. Alright, um, but there are some heaters that essentially will blow heat into a space. Alright, we're not talking about the propane structures that have, you know, sort of the heat and the fire that you bring. They can't go under the tent. That's not an option. But there are some things that could blow heat into a tent. That could be an option if they have room for that. Um, and the chief, the fire chief would certainly be willing to work with a restaurant if they have a proposal. Again, we encourage everybody, if they have, um, something that they would like us to consider, the first point of contact is Sandy Stincotta. So please reach out to Sandy and she will get the right resources of the town, um, to consider whatever, whatever would be helpful to that particular restaurant, um, or to any merchant in town. So we keep saying, bring us an idea. We are happy to take a look at it and see what we can do.
But we don't, if we could aim, uh, arm Amy with the knowledge of the kinds of heaters that might be appropriate, she could inform the restaurants to contact Sandy. If they were interested in following that up, right?
Sandy wants to say something, so I would.
Go ahead, Sandy.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, we have, I have been in contact with all of the restaurants when we were doing the outside dining and I did provide them guidelines about using heaters outside. It would probably behoove us to update that and resend it to them. And, uh, we've been clear that if they want to call the fire department, they'll work with them, uh, to accomplish whatever heating needs they may have.
Thank you. And again, thank you for all the work you're doing on this, Sandy. You're carrying a lot of the, uh, communication. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Anything else? Dan?
Just to, to, to touch a little bit about the goals. I think it's, it's a, it's a good draft document. In particular, one of the things that we've had, we always have as a problem, we get a lot of material in there and it's hard, hard to keep up with it all without, without the staff getting too, and the board getting too, spread too thinly. And this year we've got particular additional responsibilities that we need to accomplish. So the fact that, that the draft is careful in, in, in focusing on, on goals that we're carrying forward and, and working on that specifically calls out, uh, COVID responses as a key area for the town, particularly in the areas of public health and supporting the work of, of the schools, which is critical over the next, over the next year. And they do need our help. And then to have for the first time, a section which will be ongoing on race equity, I think is, is, is important to have in there. And I'm glad to see that we're on that path. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, Dan. Uh, Mary Ann?
If we're ready to turn to goals, I have a couple of other comments that I would like to add building on Dan's. Specific to the, the area or the section on race equity, um, I would actually like to suggest that we might consider adding a goal that relates to, um, redefining or, or making, making more current the role of the Needham Human Rights Committee to further goals in that area. And I do think that there's a variety of work that will be coming from Nwari that, that will make sense to be fit within that portfolio for that committee. Uh, when it was set up, it was set up to be advisory to the select board and, and clearly they are, but I do think there's a whole set of work that will, you know, really be right up the, the wheelhouse of, of the interest and, um, really encourage the engagement of that committee, uh, in a new way, um, on work that's really needed for the town. So I would hope that that's something we can accomplish. And then I, this, uh, this question about the oversight and the reports needed from public safety. I, I don't know if some of that will come from the review, if, if that will be informed by that. I, I am thinking that some of the recommendations for that will be informed by work that Nwari might be doing. As it, as it relates to our public safety department. I would also hope in the general umbrella of umbrella safety, that we would also include in that some regular reports that relate to our vehicular accidents and pedestrians that, that is needed to inform the work that we're doing with respect to pedestrian, ongoing pedestrian safety and the work that we're doing on traffic as we continue to try to understand, you know, where are we looking at traffic signals? Where do we think they're needed and just that, that, that could also be part of the reporting in that area that we might look at regularly. So a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions or discussion on goals or any of the reports? Uh, hearing none, we come to the potential motion to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Bulley?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board adjourn for the evening and that everybody can reconvene at their respective homes on Thursday for a Thanksgiving dinner, either in person or on Zoom of their choice, as long as they do it safely. Thank you.
But hopefully not with each other, with, with people of our choosing, even though I would choose all of you, but.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, no, we didn't say each other, uh, unless it was distanced and with masks and outside.
I'm open for anything. If I'm invited, I'm coming.
But I'll.
As a, as a point of information, could the record be clear that it's simply a motion to adjourn and the rest is discussion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So you second the, the pure motion to adjourn?
Wait, Dan, are you amending my motion?
I'm not, no, but I've got some cooking to do and that's occupying enough of my bandwidth that, well, I need to keep the motion simple.
So with, out of respect for Mr. Matthews bandwidth, which he alleges is limited, but I don't believe that. We come to the vote on the motion to adjourn.
Wait, I want to know what he's cooking. Okay, okay.
Three guesses, the first two don't count. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes and wishes everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you all. Good, good night.